Call the Monday, November 13th, 2017 work session of the Portsmouth City Council to order. Madam Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry. Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Matt Whitaker.
Present.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And for everybody's knowledge and information, Vice Mayor Cherry was on his way back and his plane got diverted. And he was told that find your best way home. And so they rented a car and they're on the road somewhere in the Carolinas.
I didn't sell him the plane ticket.
Yeah, you did.
I promise.
Disclaimer.
Disclaimer. So that's where he is. Otherwise, he would be here. Dr. Bach?
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, we're beginning the journey in preparation for the FY 2019 budget. This evening's presentations will provide vital background information that is pertinent in helping you to understand the ongoing financial responsibilities projected to impact the city of Portsmouth budget for generations into 2101. We will begin with the five-year forecast presentation by Mr. Brian Casey, Budget Officer. As we begin to develop the city's budget for FY 2019, it is important that we ensure the balancing of this current year's budget. However, we must also keep our eyes focused also on the city's financial future. To help aid us in this forecasting process, the General Finance Officers Association, GFOA, best practices are used in preparing the five-year forecast. The second presentation, Mrs. Ellis Kelly, the Chief Financial Officer, will present a three-part presentation. The first will be the final budget results for FY 2017. The second presentation will be of the fixed costs in the city's budget. These fixed costs or legacy costs are a result of previous City Council decisions and must be budgeted in each fiscal year's budget until all costs are paid. These costs include debt service, pension and OPEB, retirement benefits, and decisions on capital spending. All of these areas will be discussed in the third component of Mrs. Kelly's presentation. Mr. Casey.
Council members. Tonight, I will be presenting the preliminary summation of the five-year forecast. Government Finance Officers Association recommends that governments at all levels forecast major revenues and expenditures. And national credit rating agencies consider multi-year financial planning as a best practice for highly rated local governments. Long-term financial planning is the process of aligning financial capacity with long-term service objectives. It will serve as a link between departments and city management. This conservative forecast should not be confused with the budget. It is a planning tool to help management cope with the uncertainty of the future. Several methodologies were utilized to formulate the forecast. Time series analysis involves comparisons of same items, such as monthly sales revenue, over a significantly long period to detect general patterns of a relationship between associated factors or variables and project the future direction of the patterns. The Hampton Road CPI measures the changes in the prices paid by urban consumers for a representative basket of goods and services. A historical trend analysis was also utilized to provide the financial story of the city in recent years and to assist in monitoring the impact of key decisions. The Budget Office met with the City Treasurer, Commissioner of the Revenue, City Real Estate Assessor, Economic Development, and City Planning to formulate and review revenue trends. We also consulted with finance and budget departments from neighboring localities to ensure that we use best practices for the forecast. Now, before we get into the five-year forecast, it is important to look back at FY 2017. The real estate tax is the largest revenue source for the city, and the tax base remains strong. We budgeted for a 0.5% increase in real estate tax revenue in FY 17, but the actual revenues came in 1% over budget. It is also important to note that from FY 2013 to FY 17, our annual real estate tax revenue has grown from $85.2 million to $90.2 million, a 6% increase over that time period. Other local taxes, which consist of sales and use tax, restaurant food tax, cigarette tax, admissions and lodging tax, to name a few, increased by 2% from FY 16 to FY 17. Most notably, the sales and use tax, which grew from $6.8 million in FY 16 to $7.3 million in FY 17, a 7% increase. In addition, food tax grew from $7.8 million in '16 to $8 million in FY 17, a 3% increase. Conversely, we had a significant drop in personal property tax revenue for FY 2017 due to the transfer of certain VIG personal property to the Virginia Port Authority, according to the Commissioner of Revenue. The city received $18.6 million in personal property revenue in FY 2016, as opposed to $16.3 million in FY 2017, a negative 12 decrease. Revenues are forecasted to be flat for FY 19 and FY 20, and are forecasted to go gradually from FY 21 through FY 23 as of today, but could easily change based on the economy and a number of variables. You see a slight dip in revenues from FY 19 to FY 20 because planned use of fund balance is projected to decrease from $4.7 to $3.5 million. The average CPI growth in our region for the past five years is 1.4%. So our operating expenditures are projected with a 1% annual growth rate to be in line with the Hampton Roads Consumer Price Index. Now, this slide pulls all of our data together. The future impact of VIG on personal property tax revenue is unknown at this point, so the personal property forecast is flat for FY 19 and will be updated when we receive additional information from the Commissioner of Revenue. FY 19 also includes the $1.7 million bridge loan from the state, which will help with the anticipated loss from VIG revenue. We are anticipating 1% growth in real estate assessments based on our trend analysis. The other local revenues are forecasted to be flat as of today, but will be updated throughout the year. So our revenues remain strong, but with incremental growth. Department heads will once again be instructed to review, reflect, refocus, and restore while tightening their belts and closely monitoring their budgets throughout the course of the year. Any questions?
If you excluded the VIG personal property tax, would it, do you know what the change would be?
Well, the change from '16 to '17 was a negative $2.3 million. So that 1.7 helps pump that up, but we're still coming in short.
Said still down.
Still down. Yes, ma'am.
Much smaller presentation. Other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Mrs. Kelly. At the past few City Council meetings, City Council asked for a review of retirement and recommendations for the city's retirement plan. In order for City Council to make informed decisions, we are presenting a more up-to-date FY 2017 year-end result and information about legacy or fixed costs that the city is obligated to pay. As of today, the city auditors are nearing completion of the FY 2017 audit, and the audit results with a copy of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or commonly known as the CAFR, will be presented at the November 28 City Council meeting. The financial numbers have been reviewed by the senior manager and the accounting firm, and we are waiting on two partners' review and still answering a few questions for them this week. In September, I briefed City Council on the FY 2017 year-end financial results for the general fund with revenue and expense variances, and then the result as of today is a $1.3 million reduction to fund balance. This is a slightly larger impact than the first reported due to variance in revenues, particularly in personal property taxes and an increase to the reserve for ambulance billing. City Council had asked for a briefing on providing retirement increases or supplements. As we get into a discussion of retirement, we wanted to review the city's long-term or legacy fixed cost, particularly for the general fund. In September, Governing Magazine published an online article regarding legacy costs, meaning those costs that are fixed and result from decisions made in previous years or even previous decades. These legacy costs take up significant portion of the current year's budget. To quote from the article, "As legacy costs continue to rise, cities have less money for public safety, health care, and other essential services. Therefore, as we make budget recommendations and decisions, the impact on future legacy costs should be considered in any budget deliberation." The article states that legacy costs around the country are rising, and many of the larger cities with populations over 500,000 have fixed costs ranging from 20% to 30% to even 40% of their operating budget. They discuss the three major measurable types of long-term fixed costs in the general fund. They include debt service, retirement or pension funding, and other post-employment benefits. Other legacy costs that cities incur are expenses for repaired, long-neglected infrastructure, delaying maintenance for items such as building repairs, road maintenance, and water and sewer infrastructure. For the city of Portsmouth, the three major types of long-term fixed costs in the general fund are debt service, which is the amount payable to bondholders for projects previously built; that includes both principal and interest payments to bondholders; debt service is impacted by the interest rate at the time of borrowing, the amount of money borrowed, and obviously the term of the loan. Typically, projects with a long useful life have the cost of the project spread to span the length of time that taxpayers may use that service or asset. Debt service can be lower if opportunities exist to refund bonds to lower interest rates. Also, debt service can be reduced by using opportunities for zero-interest rates or tax credit bonds. Pension expense is another long-term item that the city pays, and it's the amount paid to the city's trust fund to fund pensions and benefits for both current benefits and a portion of future benefits. Pension expense is incurred, is increased or decreased by benefits provided, investment returns, and/or mortality statistics. And other post-employment benefits, or called OPEB, is typically funding health care for The legacy cost for the city of Portsmouth, the budgeted expenses for 2018 include debt service costs of $28 million for general service debt service, $11 million for pension bonds, $6 million for the VRS pension system, $6.2 million for the city pension system, and $1.5 million for OPEB, for a total of $52 million in the general fund. This is 22% of our budget, or 74 cents out of the $1.30 tax rate. The median legacy cost for large cities is 22%. So as we begin the FY 2019 budget, the $52 million is already committed.
Hold on, Mrs., this is where I was going to make my comment.
Okay.
What I wanted to stress, members of council, is that, as Mrs. Kelly has said, before we even began the budget process, we know upfront that we must budget the $52 million or 22% just for this area. In addition, we know upfront, we must budget $52.4 for the schools' budget, that is the current amount of their budget. So when we look at, we have right now already, that we have to do, $104 million that are already spoken for in this 200 and something million dollar general.
That's before you ever pay the first employee.
Right. That's before you ever pay the first employee. These costs will go on into, the pension go on until 2101.
It is also important to note that rating agencies are placing an increasing emphasis on fixed costs. Portsmouth has a strong credit rating, but all three rating agencies have noted in their rating reports that the city has a high fixed cost burden. Typically, the rating agencies like to see 20% or below and have commented that Portsmouth needs to address or minimize increasing fixed costs. When we are rated, the city has been able to offset those fixed costs with strong fund balance, annual surpluses, and local economic stability. For debt, on the screen is an updated chart of the city's outstanding debt by the type of debt. As of June 30th of this year, we have $553 million of debt outstanding, which does not include the $4 million QZAB loan that is being executed this week. Our utility system has $127 million outstanding. Pension bonds are $146 million outstanding, and the remainder of the debt is $280 million supported by tax dollars in the general fund. Whoops. Did I go back? I'm sorry, I had the wrong slide there. All right, so this is the $530 million. You see the pension bonds are $146 million, utilities $127, and then all the other tax-supported is $279 or $280 million. Our debt service is a little over $50 million, and this is for all the funds. The general fund will pay $39 million, $28 million for tax-supported debt, and $11 million for pension bonds, which is 16% of the general fund budget, or about 54 cents of the $1.30 tax rate. For our retirement system, the second-largest legacy cost for the city is the city's retirement systems. The city funds three retirement systems: the Portsmouth Supplemental System, the Fire and Police Retirement System, and the VRS system. The first two systems are closed and have about 40 current active city employees yet to retire. VRS is open and all new employees are enrolled into VRS. The city also has a 457 deferred compensation plan that employees can use and participate in to save for their retirement. The FY 2018 cost for the actuarially determined contribution, which is normally called the ADC, it used to be called the ARC, for the city's closed system is $8.3 million, which is up over $300,000 from last year. In July 2017, the city also funded a supplement of $505 to provide a $500 supplement to each beneficiary. Because the supplement was paid directly out of the general fund, the supplement did not impact future fixed costs for the city. The city will also pay $19.7 million for retirement benefits in FY 2018 for the 1,100 employees in that, or the 1,100 retirees in that system. For the VRS, the budgeted cost is $8.2 million for about the 2,781 employees in that system. In total, the retirement cost for the city in FY 2018 will be about $28 million, excluding the pension bonds, because we covered that under debt. But this cost is about 8% of the city's general fund budget. The governance of the pension system is very important. In June 2016, we underwent, the retirement system underwent a governance review as a follow-up to the 2009 Blue Ribbon Commission recommendations, and also after the issuance of $168 million of pension obligation bonds. The Board continues to make many improvements, including updating the city code, approval of governance policy and bylaws for the retirement trust fund, use of an independent pension investment advisor, significant experience in managing large pension funds, and with that, we did a more comprehensive investment policy. We reviewed and revised the asset allocation mix. We reevaluated asset managers and rebalanced the portfolio. By changing the asset mix, the Board kept the same risk profile, which was very important, and was able to increase earnings over the past quarter, the last fiscal quarter, July through September, by $2 million than if we had kept the same previous asset allocation. The funding status for the retirement system. The city's retirement system, the actuarially accrued liability is $324 million. The actual value of the assets which are in the retirement trust fund was $237.5 million as of June 30th, leaving us funded at 73.2%. This is below the target rate of 80%, which was the target when the pension bonds were issued. Investment returns, mortality occurrence, and retirement patterns all contribute to the funding status of this system. Benefit patterns are an important factor in the funding status of our retirement system. The amount the city has to contribute to pension is directly impacted by the decisions made regarding benefits. Rating agencies also look at the commitment to the retirement system funding and the stability that provides, especially since pension bonds were used to improve the funding status. And I think, as we mentioned, pension bonds were used, were one of the few cities, actually the only city in state of Virginia that used pension bonds to improve the funding status. It was a good financial move, but we needed to, we need to be aware that rating agencies do look at those pension bonds. This slide shows the expected cash flows for each year, with the high being close to $30 million, which we're experiencing right now, down to about $0.20 in about 60 or 70 years. And it's hard to see the dots keep on going because beneficiaries can live much longer.
2103.
And that's for the two closed systems?
This is the two closed systems. This is not VRS.
So the actuarial study says that the last retiree will expire.
It's retiree or beneficiary. So beneficiaries can last sometimes a little bit long.
2103.
So we're saying 2101. They have to do a new study. This is a study from a year or two ago. This does not have the new IRS mortality rates, which will have people lasting.
Longer.
Sorry, living longer, not lasting longer, living longer. So that lifespan can go on a little bit longer. And when that lifespan goes a little longer, which is wonderful for the folks that are living, but it also increases our costs. Did I do two?
No, you're right.
All right. Some statistics. The city's retirement system has 531 employees or retirees that have over 20 years of service, and of that group, 203 received less than $30,000. Some retirees had to retire on disability, meaning they were physically unable to perform their job that they were hired for. And we included those retirees and disabled retirees, which were 132. And as of those 132 disabled retirees, 79 are receiving less than $30,000 a year. In FY 2017, every retiree and beneficiary received $556, with the cost to the city of $558,000. Four months later, in July 2017, in FY 18, they received $500 for a total cost to the city of $505,000. To provide retirees only serving over 20 years and disabled retirees receiving less than $30,000 an annual $500 supplement, the cost would be about $141,000. The number of retirees living in Portsmouth totaled 284 retirees, and all the beneficiaries living in Portsmouth is 431, or 43% of the total population of retirees in the PSRS and FPRS systems. The last fixed cost the city has is OPEB, other post-employment benefits. The city has made many changes in the past few years to reduce this liability, with changes more in line with other cities, such as eliminating post-65 health care and increasing the number of years employed before a worker is eligible for a retirement benefit of health care. The city also has a health care reimbursement provision for certain retirees to receive a $1,400 a year supplement. And while not a true OPEB cost, the city does provide a $200 a month supplement for retirees under 65 in the city's retirement pension plan, but not for retirees in the VRS system. The city does not yet have a trust fund set up for OPEB benefits, so the actuary value of assets is at $0, or the unfunded accrued liability is about $29 or $30 million, and the annual required contribution for OPEB will be $2.3 million for 2017, with the actual cost about $1.1. Similar to pensions, the required contribution is both the actual cost for the year, as well as a portion of the funding for future costs. And if you have a trust fund, that amount increases or decreases the need for funding each year. So summary, as we mentioned, the city's general fund has a 22% fixed cost, which is high and considered a credit weakness. Intergenerational equity exists when issuing long-term debt for long-lived projects allows taxpayers that will benefit from an asset to be paying for that asset. However, the city's ability to issue debt or debt capacity within sound financial practices is very limited. The FY 2018 results were close to budget, and the city paid stipends to public safety in March 2017 and supplements to retirees in March 2017 and in July 2017 in FY 18 budget. The city's pension system is less than 80% funded, and the city has not yet identified new revenue or identified any cost savings for FY 2018. The legacy costs and impacts to legacy costs should be managed as much as possible. These costs do not go away, and they impact the ability to provide other important governmental services. I'd be happy to answer any questions or if Dr. Bach would hand it to us.
Pleasure. With the retirees and what have you.
This one?
We've been discussing this now for, I guess, the better part of a year, but we need to, Mayor, I think we need to come to some consensus, either yea or nay, on what retirees are requesting, and that's a $500 stipend payable in December. I support that. I think the savings, moving them off the city's health insurance saved the city just in that alone, I think, over $700,000, $728,000. And we talk about reoccurring expenses, that's actually a reoccurring savings. So I support that. I think we need to decide whether we have a consensus so we can get on down the road to other things.
All right. You've heard bills.
Are we talking about the 282 below the $30,000 or the total number of people?
The total number, yeah.
Which would be the...
The 331.
Yeah. Yep.
Would be the 663 or the 282?
Mrs. Kelly, what would it, what would it be?
The 663 is retirees that are over 20 years of service. The 282 is retirees over 20 years of service and making less than $30,000.
And that wasn't...
So would be $500 times how many people?
It depends on what council wants to do, but if they won't...
That's what I asked. 282 is 141,000, and the 600, all of them is 331. 331.
Yeah.
Right, and that one doesn't?
And that's what I'm talking about.
I'm sorry. All 663 are $331,000.
Right.
And I agree with you. I've committed to doing that like five times in the last year.
That one or that one?
663 times 500.
Right.
Yeah.
331.
331, yeah.
Let me ask you again. The 663 includes all the retirees that Bill was talking about?
It includes all the retirees that have served over 20 years.
Plus the disability.
Plus anybody that was retired on disability. So it was 531 and plus 132.
Right. Is your proposal bill for that or for all the retirees, period?
For the 663, which is all the retirees who were 20 years' service.
In the two closed systems.
And the retirees that went out on disability before they obtained the 20 years. And the retirees that went out on disability before they obtained the 20 years.
All right. So bills ask if there's a consensus. And Elizabeth, you said that you're for that.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. We're there.
But that's now, not next year's budget.
That's in December.
December.
Right.
In FY 18.
Right.
All right. In order to implement this, then we need appropriation ordinance at our next council meeting in December.
Go to the... You have the one on refinancing. Mayor, as they bring forward the next presentation, the city has an opportunity to advance refinancing of approximately $113 million of outstanding debt, substantially save on interest costs. Interest rates are at a historic low, and based on current market conditions, the city could save 12 million, approximately $12 million over the life of the refinancing bonds, which equates to about $7 million for general fund and $5 million for the utility funds. Net present value savings is estimated to be about 8.5 million. The net present value savings is about five, it's about 7.51 percent, which is well above our financial policy of a 3 percent savings for refunding. Mrs. Kelly will speak further on the opportunity we have to consider refinancing of $113 million.
Refunding, refunding bonds is a financing technique that allows the issuer, which is the city, to buy back old bonds by issuing new bonds at a lower interest rate to save interest costs. The call date is the date that an issuer can repay a bondholder, which is typically about 10 years after you first issue a bond. Current IRS tax laws allow one advance refunding before the call date. The proposed House of Representatives tax reform bill, and now the Senate reform bill, would severely limit the amount of refinancing flexibility for local governments, and if approved beginning January 2018, would disallow the advanced refundings, and you'd have to wait for your call date to be able to refund anything.
Can I stop you?
Sure.
With that prohibition, if you did an advance refund, then it becomes taxable income, right?
Yes.
That's what the bond, the penalties to the bondholder.
Holder, right.
Which makes them less attractive.
Well, you might not even be able to do it. It depends on the terms of the bonds, but yes, if you did an advance refunding, it would Based on current market interest rates, estimates are that the city could advance refund approximately $113 million in outstanding debt, which is about 20 percent of our bond portfolio. This refunding could save the city $12 million over the life of the refinanced bonds, which is 60 percent is tax-supported and about 40 percent is utility-supported. City's current policy requires a minimum savings of a 3 percent net present value for a refunding, and this proposed refunding currently yield is a 7.51 percent net present value savings. One of the bonds issued, one of the bond issues to be refunded is the 2013 Build America Bond, and that provides a federal subsidy to the city. This issue would require a different technique to properly refinance, but can be completed in the same transaction. I bring this up, though, because that federal subsidy is something that we use in our budget, and it is a different technique, and is, while they haven't talked about it, is always subject to risk.
The Build America Bond, that is a program that is an outgrowth of the Great Recession, is that correct?
Yes, yes. And many localities have done a refinancing of their Build America Bonds and have successfully done so, and I don't think there's any risk, but because it's a different type, I wanted to bring it up to council's attention. The savings that can be achieved for this refinancing will help partially mitigate the reduction in short-term revenue from the recently executed Chesapeake water contract. So...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Do you have an estimate of what that annual savings would be?
Yes, sir. All right. So the refunding estimates for the general fund, and we'll just talk about the cash flow savings, because that's right here, is about $7 million to the general fund over the life of the bond. $56,000 for golf and about $5 million for utilities for a total of $12 million cash flow savings. Now, that's over the life of the bond, so if you do net present values back to present day, it's about $8.5 million. So our interest cost would go down to about 2.96 percent. Now, this fluctuates day to day, and may, next week, news might make something change, but the, from the spring to the fall to right now, the interest rates keep on going lower, and it's just a really good opportunity to go.
Based on that table, and assuming that your debt service is X now for these bonds, what would it be, X minus what?
Depends on how we structure the bonds, but typically it's about a half a million dollars less. It could be...
Annually.
It could be annually. We want to structure the bonds, especially with the utilities, we want to structure the payments so it'll match some of the revenue lost from that Chesapeake contract. So we'd probably structure more of it upfront than in the back years.
Yes, sir.
How does this translate into an annual budget savings so that when we look at our budget for next year, what would these figures, how would they impact?
It's almost the same question. The debt service is what you really, this is the total debt. So what this would be was the debt service, we have a $52 million debt service. It's how we structure the payments over the life of the bond. So you could take some of the savings upfront and structure it where most of the savings would be in the first few years, and so you can lower it possibly by a half a million dollars a year. We'd have to really look at it and see what the best advantage it is to sell it.
So you're saying your overall debt service would decrease by almost 500?
It could decrease up to 500,000, but that's, that's very high. Typically, it would be more than like $100,000. I mean, it's how you structure it. And especially with the utilities, we want to structure it to help match some of that revenue that we're going to be reduced for the Chesapeake.
And when you, when you keep referring to the life of the bond, what is the life of the bond as far as...
Each one is going to have a different life. Typically, a bond is 20 years. Some of these bonds are 12 and 15 years. They're very, they're very long bonds because we've been doing a lot of refinancing because the interest rates are so low. So these are 2010, 2013 bonds, 2014 bonds. So they're, they're, they've only been out there about five to six years.
And this is, this, this is purely speculative at this point?
I think it's more than speculative, but the dollar amount is speculative. I think the interest rates are definitely lower. The financial advisors in the spring told us we had a refinancing opportunity. You can wait to the call date, and sometimes if you wait to the call date, you get more, more savings. And so I waited, we waited before we made a recommendation. Now it's at the point where if we go now or if we go with the call date, it's about break even, so it's better to go now when you have the savings. Back in the spring, it wasn't as big of a savings, so we said, you know, we can wait to the call date.
Yes, sir.
What, what are some of the factors that will determine how we structure?
Where we need the money, where people will buy the bonds, and, and so we typically have our financial advisors help us structure when we want to pay back the, their money. But really, you can't reduce much more than what you owe that year for that particular bond. So if you only owe $10,000, you can't reduce more than $10,000.
Did you get your answer, Dr. P?
Thank you.
Trying to predict what the market's going to do.
Right, right. So we have a very aggressive schedule to do this refinancing. We have, November 28th, we're going to come to council with the bond resolution. We will have $113 million. If there's more that's available, we'll add more, or typically, we'll make it a round number, so if there's one or two series that we can add, we will do that. The week of November 28th, we have rating agency phone calls and presentations. The week of the 20, of the December 4th, we have the rating agency results. We'll have a preliminary official statement issued for bond, people that want to buy the bonds. In that preliminary official statements will be the terms of the bonds, the biography of key council members, key government officials. There is also economic development activity, CAFR, our annual financial report results, and that is published online for bondholders to look at or for bond, potential investors to look at to determine whether they want to participate in the sale. And then the week of the December 12th, we'd have the bond sale.
So the question, so if I'm holding the bond and you call it and refinance it, then as the bondholder, that's pushing my payoff further out into the future?
If you're holding the bond, we can say we're going to pay you back.
Right.
So it's like the bank holding your mortgage. You might want to pay off your mortgage, so instead of paying, we're paying off the bond, and we're going to get a new mortgage somewhere else at a lower interest rate.
Right, but, but for me, the bondholder, if my maturity date, has my maturity date been pushed out further?
I'm sorry.
Has my maturity date been pushed out further? So instead of 2018?
No, actually, this is an advance refunding, so I did that wrong. What we'll do is we will buy back the bonds, we will put them in escrow to pay off you when your call date comes as a bondholder. And so your maturity date stays the same.
Stays the same, okay.
Everything will stay the same, the payoff.
Question back on forward. What constitutes the golf fund? Where does that come?
The golf fund is, we have debt that has been issued for three golf courses, I think mainly the, the Bydaway renovation that was done, Councilman Moody, you probably know him better than I.
It was actually built. It was rebuilt.
It was 90s, yeah.
Yeah. It was really the rebuilding of a golf course, not renovation.
Rebuilding.
Yeah. Just that one, Bydaway?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Any further questions? Everybody comfortable with this? And this date works that you, this schedule that you can get the public hearings in and so forth?
With bond refinancing, you don't need a public hearing. You just need a casserole.
But we will be able to meet the deadline, and this is not the first time this team, we...
Yeah, we've done it before.
We've done it before and know the process, so we'll, with your concurrence, we'll move swiftly ahead.
Any more?
We can be ready for the December 12th sale date, okay? With that said, Mayor, members of council, that concludes our presentations for tonight.
And we don't have a closed session?
Where are we on the information regarding the firefighter, firefighters, emergency personnel, the overtime pay issue that was brought up?
We gave you a report in your executive brief and update, but I have, I have some, I have some information I can share with you now on the, which is a very good report.
All right.
Okay. Since we met, and we have, we had the extra week within before a coming back, so we've been away about two and a half, almost three weeks. The fire department currently has 29 sworn vacancies and five civilian vacancies right now. However, as of today, we have hired 20 firefighter recruits who will report to work on November 12th, 2017, and we have rehired six former Portsmouth firefighters who will report to work on November 27th, 2017. In addition, we have three former Portsmouth firefighters who will be offered positions once they have been approved by the Civil Service Commission. The nine rehires will be assigned to a station after a brief two-week orientation. The fire department is actively working to feel after this is in place, we'll have only five civilian positions remaining.
Very good.
The issue that I raised at the last meeting was regarding the, I believe that was the, was it the first Sunday in October we had that vacancy? And I specifically was asking about why that vacancy occurred. You mentioned that there were some call-ins, and I further asked about the policy regarding filling those vacancies, and I, that's what I was...
Right. Dr. Whitaker, we gave you a detailed report in your...
Right, but I didn't see, I didn't see the actual city policy.
Oh, a copy of the policy.
I was asking for the policy in regards to how, how those positions are filled, and that, that wasn't in there.
Can you get that?
Yes, I can get it.
To make it even, to make it clear, so, because this is second request on it, there were some vacancies on that Sunday.
There were nine.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Nine absenteeists.
Right, and it, it was quite a bit of publicity that was on the news and Facebook. My question is, how is it that, and the policy I was asking about is in regards to if the fire chief or battalion chief knows that there are vacancies, then how is the previous staff allowed to leave with vacancies, thereby exposing the city? And that's my, that's my question on, on that policy.
Right, they, they don't leave.
Well, if they didn't leave, then how is it that we have vacancies?
Absences, that's what you're saying, absences on that day.
There were vacancies.
Right. I don't have the report right now in front of me, but I addressed that in what I reported back. I shall pull that. I cannot recollect it off the top of my head, it was very detailed. I'll pull that this evening and have it sent again to members of council, because the answers were in that report.
Can we address it tomorrow in our session?
I'll bring it back, I'll bring it tomorrow. But I'll bring that report. Yeah, we have that, okay, good.
All right. Any other questions? All right, well, we're adjourned, and we'll reconvene tomorrow at 5:00.